Good morning, and can you check your audio? I sent him another. Aretha? Can you check your audio? We can see you, but we can't hear you, Aretha.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect.
Morning, everybody. Of audio working, so we're going to get this morning. This is the City's Advisory Committee, June 12th, 2020. My name is councillor Rachel Lynn, and I'm Chair of the School Boards Advisory. The Clerk has confirmed that we have a room. So I have the City School Board Committee to order. Welcome. We've got a bit of a packed day. Some people in transit here who are working from home or other places. And but we are and actually one of the trustees, trustee. And like to welcome everybody. This meeting is being held by members and staff, participating by video and in person at City Committee Room Two. Of the public are of course welcome to attend and observe the meeting on YouTube. Because we are meeting remotely, be patient with any technical issues, as you can see, we had a few this morning. If you are registered to speak at the meeting, please listen for your name. I will call order they appear on the list. The list of speakers online by visiting the boards advisory committee, no dot C A for council and clicking this for today's meeting. I request that and invited participants, all observers joining, keep their video turned off or answer questions. This will make it easier for Chair to see the members as we debate and vote. I also want all members and staff muted unless you need to question or to speak. Wish to speak on an item, make sure your video is on, raise your hand, microphone and indicate attention to speak. When voting on an item, ask members to turn on your and raise your hand to vote. Also remind members that if you have options on any of the items, you must submit and email to staff at B A C at to dot C A. To the land acknowledgement. Although we may be in different locations, housing rights advisors would like to acknowledge that the thing on is the traditional of many nations, including the Mississauga, the Inishnaab, the Haudenosaunee, the Wendat, and is now diverse First Nations and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that is covered by Treaty 13, the Mississaugas of the Credit. At this time, we need to confirm the minutes from our meeting, our last three, 26, 25. So just looking around to see if to confirm those minutes. Have we lost trustee on the screen anymore?
I'm here. I thought you had to be off camera.
Okay, sorry. Clarify with the clerk. So just to clarify, guest speaker, we keep your until it's your time to speak. But we do need, I will just clarify, we need cameras to keep cameras on because that's what we have quorum. So to the clerk's office, clarifying that.
Madam Chair, if you don't, I have no idea how to.
Okay, that's all right. Don't, trustee Rizzo, you can let me know if you wish to speak. At this time, for somebody to, your last time to confirm.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Trustee has moved that. All in favor? Any opposed? And carried. So we will now the agenda.
Madam Chair, please, please, diligence for a moment. I'm almost there, but I'm not there yet. It will be another 10 minutes until City Hall. Asking if if we could reorder agenda and the other item first until like there, would you mind?
Okay. Let me. I'm just going to double check that we have everybody for the second agenda item. I see no problem. But I need, so we have a mo, Rizzo, can I ask? All in favor? Okay, seeing no one read. So we're going to move then, TS.
Thank you.
We're going to move to 4.3. We're going to move to 5.2. It should be TS 5.2. Okay, so we, this is T52, City of Toronto Public Education Program Opportunities for Collaboration. And we are going to have a presentation first before discussion. We have some members online and who are going to speak as in the room. So I'll turn it to Aretha Phillips first, who I believe will introduce them.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you to the committee to hear our report. I'm here today joined by my colleague Tobias Novograty, who's a deputy city clerk for Toronto Elections. And I am as the clerk of Aretha Phillips, the chief of protocol. And we're very excited to have this opportunity to chat with you, talk about the city's new public education program, and hopefully get some ideas, excitement, interest in opportunities for collaboration with the various boards. Tonya, will you turn the page? Be able to go to the next slide? I just want to make sure everybody can hear me.
We can hear you perfectly. We're getting the tech up and running for you. I will just say neglected to introduce you properly. Ms. the chief of protocol and assistants at the city. Thank you so much. We're getting the tech going and we'll go up and running for you.
Okay. Or do you want me to keep going? Wait. Let me know when.
I think we're good.
Okay. So one of the pieces, you know, civic education, why now? It's tough. We have not a public education program, but we recognize just looking at landscape that it's important that we provide some opportunities for the public to understand how it works and how we can get to help get involved. We know through various studies have been done, Toronto Foundation being one of them, that young people, people in general have become very disengaged since the pandemic. And there's definitely a big platform and a big, a big piece of that is around young people. So we really want to think about that democratic pipeline and how that we can get it back and what are, how we can build it and what our role and responsibility is as municipal government. But we need to take more of a leadership role in providing that information. And we also know that right now there's a lot of common misunderstandings about what local government does. People don't understand the distinction. And that goes as well within, within schools as well. We have kids who are taking public education civics in grade five and grade 10, and there's not much points of intersection between that. I think there's, we think, you know, there's definitely some common misunderstandings of what we do. I believe that, you know, the trust in local government is threatened and trust in local institutions. And there's a definite rise in misinformation and disinformation. So we feel that we could be the stewards of that right information. We know that political polarization is on the rise and that the pandemic severely impacted civic engagement. And we also find that federal and provincial governments often dominate the public discourse. So when there are conversations about government, there's very little discussion around the impacts of local government, which, which the public, residents come into contact with probably more so than the other two levels of government. We know that there is more newcomers coming to our city, many of them coming to places where there is no trust in government. So really, how do we get them engaged? And how do we use their, their children? How do we get their children to start talking about local government in the house? So we really want to welcome and reflect the needs of our residents. Next slide, Tonya. So in our, in our thinking around developing a public education program, we really have three goals in mind. We want to be able to engage teachers and students and parents and caregivers in educational programs, employment opportunities, and really providing some learning activities to develop lifelong election, lifelong democracy participation habits in youth. And we think that potentially the school boards would be a great place to start this. You know, I always say I'd love for young people to start to think about democracy and participation, the same way that they think about and they learn about recycling and the environment, the stewardship of the environment, or the way they talk about smoking or the use of drugs. We really want to empower young people to, to use that knowledge that they get and their, about their rights and responsibilities. You know, how do, how can we get them on to the voters list? How do we get them to start talking about that? And even getting engaged at the local level, at the local school level, getting kids excited about, about school government, government. Thinking also about how we can create clear paths for youth to get involved and participate in local government before they have the opportunity to vote. So again, really building that pipeline and getting them excited. So whether that's, you know, learning who your local councillor is to one day running for office, how are we building? What are the building blocks to get to that? Next slide. So Tobias and I are both located within the city clerk's office. I like to think about the clerk's office as the portal, the doorway to public participation. We administer municipal elections. We are the ones at the center of the legislative meetings and the decisions and agendas, similar to the meeting that we are, we are here, we are in today. We are connecting the public with the decision makers. We have stewardship of the information through our corporate information management, really wanting to keep it transparent and accessible. We also administer public appointments to local boards and manage the records, information of the archives and host special events and ceremonies. In 2015, we created a program called My Local Government. And the goal of it was to, to help the public learn more about the local government and their place in it and how are we filling, filling the gaps of programming and information? Some of that work was put on hold since the pandemic, but we rejuvenated the program with some new broader goals, including partnerships, which is why we're here to talk to you today. And we now have a robust tour program that many of you may be familiar with. So for us, you know, the, the goals, helping residents understand what local government is, how they can get involved, how we create meaningful and inclusive and accessible public education opportunities that will help public participation. And then how are we establishing the city of Toronto as a primary source for public education on local government and how decision making works in Toronto? So how are we engaging? We've got six pillars that we're, we're working on and we're thinking about this, really it's about an, it's about a democratic cycle which leads to voting. And then we start again over the four years. So we have five, six sort of areas. One is online resources. So adding online resources so that teachers and students can, can go to those resources and get more information to help with their programs, to help with projects. We are doing tours of City Hall geared to grades five and above. We also do some post-secondary. We also have our democracy and election engagement, which Tobias will speak to you about shortly. We have signature events like Newcomer Day, Doors Open, Take Your Kids to Work Day. I'm going to speak to you about a new one that's going to promote International Day of Democracy. Again, really thinking about our internal and external partnerships. The work that we're doing is very much aligned with some of the work being done on our social development division where communities have been saying that they want to know more about how they can engage in local, local decision making. And that's very clear with particularly within the Black community, Indigenous community and other marginalized communities. And then thinking about school and curriculum connections. We are not the content experts. We would leave curriculum up to the teachers, but very interested in working with teachers and school boards to figure out how we can make a more exciting and engaging program. So I mentioned really quickly City Hall tours. We are, we are back up and running in the, with our tours. And students have the ability to come to see the physical space of City Hall because we want them to feel like it's a place that they belong, that they can come to, that they can connect with. And they come to learn about the space. They come to hear what happens in terms of decision making, what councils do. We try to arrange for their local councillor to be there as well to meet them. And if they come on a day where councils meeting, they would actually get to go into the council meeting and be a part of the proceedings. And this we find is a way for us to establish new relationships with teachers, parents and caregivers and students, particularly in equity deserving groups. We have a lot of, we, we do get a lot of tour requests right now by the Toronto Public District, District School Board, but would love to open that up to the other three boards as well to get their students engaged. One of the next things that we're working on for 2025 is the International Day of Democracy. September 15th is an internationally recognized day to commemorate and promote and uphold the principles of democracy. It's something that is led by the federal government. But we would really love to take the opportunity this September to kind of introduce civics teachers to this program, whether that is being able to come to a professional development day to talk about the materials, the work and the opportunities. And then thinking about maybe an announcement of the Day of Democracy, to think about a day for student council leaders to come to City Hall and have a full day of civics and learning and leadership. Hopefully they could take that back to their schools to start getting other kids and get interested and engaged and even thinking about getting kids onto the voters list. And as well, we are looking at maybe partnering with the two other levels of government as well to do something with civics teachers, to talk about some cross collaboration and opportunities. For us, I think one of our end goals is to figure out how we could build a City Hall classroom and partner with the boards to develop something that would be an extended type of tour program where kids could have something a little bit more immersive, where they're learning a bit more about the things that happen municipally. How do the lights go on? How do we treat the water? How do we make decisions? And hopefully that inspires them to think about, inspires them to think about leadership in that way and be, and to be, to participate. There is a correlation, will you see that if you ask people, who was on you, who was in school council? You'll find that there's lots of CEOs, heads of NGOs, mayors, councillors, who, this is kind of the starting of their interest in this kind of work. So we would love to see that be, be continued. So now I'll turn to Tobias to talk a little bit about the work he's doing with elections.
Thank you, Aretha, and good morning, committee members. So I'll speak briefly to how we envision International Day of Democracy, which my colleague Aretha just spoke about in 2026, in the election year. So we, in addition to what she's already mentioned, we see this being a day when we can do further education and connection with voters about the election's process, how they can become more familiar with how ballots work and tabulators, and again, learn how to get on the voters list or to update their information on the voters list. And I will just mention in terms of our early thinking about this for 2026, we have engaged with the Toronto Public Library to see whether their locations, their staff and their work in the public civic information space is something that we can work with them on. Next slide. So I'll speak briefly about two initiatives that we're also looking into. So the first is Kids Vote Weekend, and this is a new program that we're developing to provide an authentic voting experience for elementary school age students, grades one to eight, although we're really want to focusing in on grade five, grade five kids as well. This program is in fact inspired by a similar program that was developed by Alexion Montreal and Alexion Quebec, which was called Petit Bureau de Vote. So we want to acknowledge that this type of activity and engagement has been tried in other jurisdictions in Canada. This program would be an opportunity for young people to learn about the voting process and gain hands-on experience with the voting mechanics. And we see it as an opportunity to create excitement and interest and start a conversation in households, in families about democracy and civic responsibility. And as Aretha has mentioned, another contribution to the pipeline of our residents, our young residents who are connecting to the democratic process. We are in the early stages of working out the details of this program, but I'll share a few thoughts and just indicate that we're really interested in speaking with board members further about this and co-developing it together. So some quick mechanics. We see this being a program that would take place over advanced vote. So in an election year, there's, there's a voting that happens during advanced vote, two weeks or so prior to actual election day. Advanced voting takes place in 50 locations across the city into voting places in each of our 25 wards. And we would see the creation of essentially a mini voting station for Kids Vote Weekend adjacent to or just outside of the voting place itself. Kids would be able to come, learn about an issue, cast their ballot, put it in the ballot box, marking their ballot. So actually in a tactile and direct way, being involved in the voting experience. We are exploring a partnership with the city's Environment, Climate and Forestry Division to develop the ballot question, potentially related to something to do with forestry. So you might imagine the candidates being trees, for example. And you might imagine an opportunity to learn about different trees and their importance in the city. And then the opportunity for the participants in the program to cast a ballot for their favorite tree. The exact ballot question is still to be, to be finalized, but we, we were excited about this partnership in many, many ways. We're asking at this time, as I said, for the opportunity to further explore this program with the school boards, with yourselves, and for you to identify perhaps a colleague or a champion for it, who we can further discuss it with. Next slide. So another program I want to speak about is Student Connect. Student Connect is a longstanding, long-running program. It connects students with their communities through civic engagement and specifically it involves providing students typically aged 16 or 17 with a meaningful opportunity to work in a voting place on election day. It is a paid experience. It provides practical work experience and it's something that students can add to their resume, perhaps get a reference letter and to identify how, what they've learned and done, working and supporting our operations in our voting places is something that has built their competencies, their confidence, their knowledge about our democracy. Some key mechanics here. The way the program works is that schools first need to put up their hand and identify a facilitator whom we can work with. And then the students can put up their hand to participate in the program. And we do work through and with those school facilitators to make sure that the participants meet our eligibility requirements. They need to be in good standing. They need to be at least 16 years old on voting day itself. And if they are under 18 years of age, we do need parental consent as well. We will be developing a toolkit for, for students and the facilitators that can provide them with more information about how they can highlight the experience that they've had working on voting day on their resume, et cetera. And we're also looking to identify an opportunity to recognize those schools who have the biggest number of participants and thank them for their service to our democracy, would explore what that recognition would look like. But it could be that we would come as Toronto election staff and provide your school with additional resources and information about the voting process, perhaps assisting in your own student council elections, if that's something that you do. So those are two programs that we are looking at. And as Aretha mentioned, we're excited about the opportunity to collaborate with each of your boards on all of these opportunities. Aretha, I'll turn it back to you for some closing remarks.
Thanks, Tobias. Thanks, Tobias. So that's sort of in a nutshell. I think, you know, we recognize that boards obviously have a lot of work on their plate. So we're not trying to add anything additionally to it. We want to be seen here as a resource to help to expand the programs that you already have. So really looking to build relationships with boards. We have had some conversations with the Toronto District School Board. We have had relationships, but they've always been with individuals. So when the individuals leave, then we have to start again. So we're looking to have an institution-to-institution relationship that we can continue and build on. I think we also want to understand from you how the city of Toronto can support the work that you're doing in civic education, because that may look different for the different boards in terms of the tools and resources and the things that you're able to do. And then as well, we just, we have information and we'd love to be able to share that with the students, administration, and teachers about our initiatives and encourage participation. So I'll end there to leave some time for discussion, but very excited about this and hopefully we can develop a longstanding partnership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Aretha and team, for presenting on these current initiatives. It's really exciting work that's aimed at engaging students and teachers in Toronto schools, all about our local government and municipal elections. I know this is something that certainly when I was on TDSB, something trustees talked about a lot and trustees around the province talked about a lot. So at this point, I would just ask the trustees in the room if they have questions of staff. I see Nathan has his hand up. So we'll go to trustee Shen and then trustee Ogier in the room, and we'll go from there. So trustee Shen, please go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for the presentation. I'm very excited to hear about this new initiative. I think it's critically important. I have a few questions. From my understanding, City Council passed a motion, if I'm correct, to explore reducing the voting age for municipal election to 16. Is that true? If that is, where would that be in terms of the context of this work?
So through the chair, my understanding is that that motion was actually specific to what we call neighborhood polls, which is a mechanism to engage residents on particular issues, but not for a general municipal election. A general municipal election is conducted under the auspices of the Municipal Elections Act. That's a provincial statute. So any consideration around voting age and eligibility to participate in municipal elections would primarily need to be directed to the provincial government.
And I could just add as well, trustee Shen, it's, just to give a few examples of things like that, it might be like if there is a consideration of doing speed humps on a street, we would do a neighborhood poll. And it's those kind of things that might, would go out to all households. And if you were 16 and older, you would be able to apply. I'll go back to staff. I think they have more to add.
Yeah, what I, what I do want to add is that there is a new opportunity. Elections Ontario now manages and maintains the voters list. And Elections Ontario has something called the Register of Future Voters, and it's a mechanism for 16 and 17-year-olds to go online, provide their information, and when they turn 18, they are automatically added to the voters list. And that would be for municipal elections, provincial elections, and so forth. So that is something that through some of the initiatives that we were just talking about, could be promoted to 16 and 17-year-olds in your board. And it's another opportunity to get them thinking about their engagement in elections. And it's actually the keystone mechanism for ensuring that they are on the voters list when they are eligible to vote when they turn 18. And that is another way that they then get information about where to vote, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Before I proceed, share just a quick question around process. I forget whether it's five minutes or three minutes, or is it together with responses? So they ask the questions together? I forget. It's been a while since I've been back.
It's usually five minutes, and I admit I forgot to start the timer. So I think we can certainly go ahead with another question. I think you have time for that. And then, and then we can move on. But you can, you aren't limited to just five minutes. We can go to other speakers and then come back as well.
Okay, yeah. Then if it's five minutes with the responses, I'll just quickly make my points and then maybe hear collectively what their thoughts are. There's a group called Civics with the X at the end that is doing Ontario-wide work with school boards on some of the civic engagement work. And there's some tools and resources that have been created. So it might be good to see if there's any possible, you know, resource sharing. I do think that, and there's also the Local Government Week, which the Association of the Clerks are also involved in, that's in October. So maybe when, like, since it's already established, how do we make sure October is a good time to do things in schools because it's not that busy at that time? It is always busy, but relatively speaking, that definitely works. When we're talking about civic teachers and, and student councils and so on, I, you know, pleased that they exist and they do amazing work, but you know, there's limitations of. So I would, I would urge to look at, you know, Black Students Association, Muslim Students Association, leadership and others, to do some of the work for communities that have often found ways in which, and we can definitely help, because when we do conferences specific to Black Students Association and Muslim Students Association, we can definitely look at exploring ways in which speakers from the city could be at the school setting to do some of these things. I think there's a bit of, you know, as, I don't know how to explain, there's definitely layers of equity pieces there. Yeah, and I think the, the, the tour of, of City Hall would definitely be good, but also other civic spaces, because it's all, one of the issues we face at the board is obviously professional development work. It's hard when there's so much curriculum change and we have professional development. So it would be really hard to pull teachers out of classroom with all the courses associated to have training, which is also not, while this is important, there are a lot more of the classroom-related PDs that are still pending. So I do think it might be good to do staff meetings and other things where it's actually a bit more, bit more of a collaborative approach to reduce the, the amount of time teachers might need to be out of it. I think one of the other things I think would be helpful is if there's some.
Just, just, just a reminder, at the city, it's a little bit different than, certainly at TDSB, I don't know about the other boards, but we do questions first, and then you have a separate time for speaking, like commenting. So at this point, we just, I just encourage you to keep your remarks to comment, or to questions, and then we can go to, after we've done all questions, we'll go to comments.
Okay, so I think my question then, just generally around, like, the two things, civics group as well as the, the Local Government Week, has there been any kind of consideration to pair up those things in any way already? Or if not, is that something possible to explore?
Through you, Chair, I can answer.
I'm waiting to see if Aretha's going to jump in. Aretha, did you want to take that first, or?
Yeah, I can start and you can join in. We definitely are aware of the civics organization, providing some of the information to the schools. I think we also have information that we are also available to share. So we're happy to reach out to see how we can coexist. I think there's lots of information. I do see the city of Toronto as locally, as sort of like the local experts on municipal government, because it does happen in our space. Definitely we'll look into the Day of the Democracy Day, Week that you're talking about, trustee Shen, because as we know, we definitely recognize that September is a tricky time because your schools are just getting classrooms sorted. So we can always look at something that works for the school board.
Thank you. I will, I'll stop with that. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And we can, of course, come back to you when we do rubber round for comments. Trustee Ogier, please go ahead.
Mine was more of a comment, so I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, so trustee Rizzo, please go ahead. You have a question.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And it is really exciting. I'm wondering if you could tell me how we're spreading the word.
I think we have been through the channels that we have, but we're always looking for more channels to get into the boards. As I mentioned before, we have relationships with individuals within the board, but sometimes when they leave, then we're starting it all over again. So we're trying to develop a institution-to-institution relationship. So far, we've been using our councillors to go to their trustees to let them know about the tour opportunities. But I know Tobias probably can speak to his election engagement with the boards. But we are also working through wanting to get information to the boards. So any information that you can provide us to help us open up that line of communication would be great.
So do you have connections with, for example, the communication departments at the board through you, Madam Chair?
We do, but it would be great to just validate that those people are still there because it's, as we're restarting the program. And given elections every four years, sometimes the people change. So it's like we're always starting from scratch every time. So it would just be great to kind of develop a more regular relationship. Tobias, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just thank, thank you, Aretha. Just to add to that, as my colleague's saying, from a Toronto elections perspective, you know, we're most active in the immediate lead-up to an election event. So recently, for the Toronto District School Board's trustee, Ward 11, by-election, we were very much in touch with, with the TDSB's communication staff. And there were a number of opportunities to promote that by-election through the TDSB's communication channels that we provide the factual information to, and then they're amplified by the board's communication channels. I think, you know, something that we're hoping through this dialogue to raise the salience around is while we have additional resources available to us during and in the immediate lead-up to an election event, this conversation about providing exposure to democracy civic engagement learning opportunities and engagement opportunities is something that needs to be happening all the time, not only when there's an election that's live. And that's something that we're hoping to elaborate upon and kind of get those institutional relationships going so that there is a cadence and kind of continuous exposure and opportunity to say, hey, here's what's happening. That kind of feeds further awareness and hopefully further, further engagement. So there is something that we do want to be working with your communication staff around.
Okay, so it's my understanding that there is some curriculum, I believe it is grade five, where, I think that's where it sort of begins. I'm wondering if there's a method by which you could think of to connect with grade five teachers as an example. I don't, I don't know what other boards do, but like, you know, we have in specific areas, well, all the areas of the city, but they're by district, where all the principals get together in a particular area. I'm wondering if you could perhaps consider doing presentations to the principals who spread it out to their teachers, who then hopefully spread it out to classrooms. That's something you're interested in doing, because otherwise I'm not going to pursue and get the content involved in making sure that that happens. But I'm just wondering, or is it just like, you're stages and you're developing to that? Through you, Madam.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think we would be open in any connections that we could make to start the dialogue with boards and recognizing that everyone does it differently. We're trying to, what's the best avenue within each of the school boards to start to get some, to start to have some dialogue. We have been, have met already with Jason Doe and have got a bit of, some discussions going on in the, in the District School Board, but looking to figure out what the best channels are for the other boards as well.
That's great.
We would welcome that.
It would be really helpful to get some contact information so we can make those kinds of connections.
That would be great.
I certainly have it right in front of me anyways. But thank you very much for the presentation and your doing. I think it's great.
So perhaps I can facilitate that a bit. Meeting my office can connect Ms. Phillips to the trustees on, and then perhaps you could forward her mail to your communication staff and perhaps your directors, who can then determine who best in your board would be the appropriate channel. Then conversations can happen at staff to staff. That would be my suggestion as to what the best forward, whether it's like a webinar that's open to grade five teachers or grade 10 teachers. Those are the two you're going to have civics curriculum. That's certainly something that we can help facilitate. If other people have suggestions, I'm certainly welcome to take those and facilitate however I can. Are there any other speakers on item, or questions on this item? Then we'll go to speakers if there's. Okay, so trustee, a question or a speaker comments? So we'll go to trustee Ogier and then we'll come to you for, for.
Much, through you, Madam. Obviously, I think this is a very interesting initiative, and I have two points, and I hope that the first point will be take more, I don't want to be pooing, want to bring out some of the complexities. So obviously, we can all support a better understanding of municipal government by students in our boards. I wouldn't want the city of Toronto to function on its own, because obviously Shen mentioned Local Government Week. AMO already has a kit for Local Government Week, and you really don't want to be reinvent the deal, right? And especially in our board, our board goes from Trenton to Windsor. And you're speaking specifically about Toronto. So if any materials, I mean, it would only work with Toronto, because you want the students to be able, for it to make sense for a student in Bowmanville or Windsor. That's one thing to consider. Also, our schools are French schools. So if there were any materials, I mean, of course, knowing that the province is responsible for curriculum, it would need to be in French. And for, you know, the visit at City Hall to be in French. So I don't, something the city of Toronto is considering in and out. So those are some things to consider. The second point I found very interesting was the, what the spending for next year during the election year, if the possibility of hiring students who are 18 or 17 years old. And I think that's a great opportunity, especially to consider that the election municipal governed by the Municipal Elections Act, which is provincial responsibility, and voting in a designated area like Toronto would require the French language services. And so if the city hired students from our board, you would be in a position to increase the publicity of the city of Toronto, which is actually quite large. So I see this as a really good opportunity for the city to be able to enhance language services on that specific action. Municipal election in 2026. So I, I'd be happy to look at the board if there's one person, they can point the city to, but before, I just want to make sure that the city is interested in providing material in French, whether it's, you know, recycling what Montreal has done. But just keep in mind that everything we provide our students has to, whether it's a field trip, materials to be used in class. So just some thoughts.
Ms. Phillips, are you able to answer the question? This is a bit of a curveball, but interesting one.
And I think it's, I think it's really important. I think it's really important, why Tobias and I came to this with this perspective that no, no board's misogynist way of doing things. I mean, we are in the beginning phases. I think it's something that we could look at. Probably require a question with your board, trustee Ogier, to figure out what is possible, what do you do, what do you already have? And I think that's where we could start the dialogue and see what. Tobias, I wanted to answer if you have any other comments.
Yeah, thank you. And specific comment, something that we have, you know, our voting place staff does often indicate which languages they speak so that coming into the voting place, which languages they speak, the staff know which languages place staff speak. So when there's a resident who has different language needs, they can hopefully be referred to a staff person and assist them in their language. As you mentioned, if we have your students participating, that would. As you mentioned, if we have your students participating, that would increase the possibility to serve residents.
Okay, so interesting, interesting comment for staff to back and think about how that might be able to be incorporated. Trustee Shen, you're next.
Madam Chair, I just want to say I'm pretty, very excited to start this initiative. It is, how long ago would you? And I think I can take it back to the board and try to figure out a point person and connect through Chair, Consulate Chair Nuslin as well. I do think that there's opportunity for our school board to have a parallel complementary type of initiative that can actually take it from a higher up point of view to plan as opposed to, you know, trying to connect for webinar here or professional development there, like what is our version of this project in the school board and how do they link together? Because I'm sure there are a lot of teachers who are really interested in this. There are a lot of people who want to see this happen. So I think that that's a good, good way for us to, because we are, we have 240,000 students. It's almost the size of some of the cities out there. So it's, it's good to have a plan and go in with that. The voting age at 16, I do think that, you know, I understand it's a provincial thing, but we have in the past through city made such suggestions to the province to look at something to consider. I do think that, you know, municipally, our young people are ready at the age of 16 to engage in municipal decision. A lot of them are working, a lot of them are, are in positions to support. So that's something to consider as a suggestion to the province to potentially, similar conversations I've had in the past around permanent residents as well. So just as some of that advocate who was at the city earlier as a youth advocate as well, I think 16 years would be a good advocacy for city to do. I do, like I mentioned, I do think that we need to expand who we traditionally think of civic education, you know, who are the civic teachers, you know, what is their background? And what are the other teachers who are, who are doing some of the other work? So when we are developing curriculum, for example, we don't have to confine. I used to be a math and science teacher. So we don't have to confine curriculum to those traditionally thought to be civics related. So it could be even a math project, a financial literacy project that is related to municipal government. So if you, if you can creatively look at developing lesson plans and tools and so on that could be incorporated in science, math, English and other subjects, you know, writing letters to counselors, for example, for a class to do something as an activity to say, you know, what are some things that they want to kind of talk to their counselor about and respond? And then have the counselor come back to the class too. So I think we have to figure out ways in which it's outside the civics curriculum type model because that is very limiting and in fact, you know, it is very confined to certain grades in a way that is, that's not expanding this capacity. The last part I want to talk a little bit about is, is the capacity that we built while doing this work. If there's a possibility, again, I'm exploring this as a possibility, if the city can allocate micro grants that are $250 or, or things that, that like Lady Law Foundation does or work with Lady Law Foundation that talks about youth engagement to, to give out young people to develop the tools. Because the materials we create sometimes aren't necessarily the kind of material that will go viral amongst young people. So if they're able to animate, if they're able to video edit, if they are able to do a lot of the things you are using AI and stuff like that, why not, you know, prior to a certain period of before election or maybe even this, this year to build some capacity for young people to create their own tools, obviously vetted by the city before it's shared. But a micro grant kind of a thing to schools would go a long way. And we can possibly work with a foundation like Lady Law Foundation to see if they would be interested in it. And I think, and the other opportunity to hire young people, again, not during election as well, but, you know, we have some Canada summer jobs programs and other things that, that could potentially facilitate some of those things to, to make young people develop the tools as opposed to us doing that. So I know the city does a great work in this and through SDFA and the programs that SDFA does. So I'm very excited to see this happen and looking forward to helping to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shen. Are there any further comments before we move on? Okay, seeing none, then I would ask for a motion to receive this item for information. Okay, trustee Shen has moved this for receipt. All in favor?
Madam Chair, just to make sure that you'll provide us with some contact information to, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll send out an email hopefully this afternoon, but if not, certainly this week.
No rush.
We'll get something out to you. Okay. So this item has now been received, moved by trustee Shen. At this time, we will move on to our second item, which was originally the first item. And that is TS 5.1 Development Review Update Presentation in response to TS 4.3 Backlog of City Approvals for School Boards Projects. This comes out of a motion made, I think it was a motion or a request made last meeting by trustee Rizzo. So today we have Velasa Faria, Executive Director of Development Review, who will be here to provide a presentation on an overview of the city of Toronto's newly created Development Review Division and a status update on active school board development applications. Just as, I just want to explain to everybody what's going to happen is we're going to have our presentation. Then we do have a delegation. So after the presentation, we'll go to delegations and then we'll move on. I just wanted to, because some boards are different, I want to make sure everybody understands the process because this is the first delegation we've had at a meeting that I've chaired for this committee. So over to staff for a presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and members of committee. I'm Velasa Faria, Executive Director of Development Review and very pleased to be here today to present to you a bit of our new division as well as to provide an update on the sites that was requested by this committee. So what is Development Review? In 2014, the city of Toronto consolidated all development and growth related services, including city planning, Toronto building, the housing secretariat, and a newly created Development Review Division under a new service area. And this service area is called Development and Growth Services and it reports to a deputy city manager, which is Jag Sharma. The Development Review Division is the newest division in that service area. And we were established specifically to expedite the review of development applications. So our team is comprised of multidisciplinary experts, including community planning, which is all five community planning districts across the city, development engineering, transportation review, plus we have a number of policy staff and business operation staff who are focused on expediting the review of, of development applications. And I will note that having a multidisciplinary team under one, under one division helps us as a city to break down some of those silos, to work collaboratively on applications and really, really work towards getting to a yes quicker. So in that vein, the mandate and benefits of the new division. Next slide. We were set up again specifically to expedite the review of all development applications with a focus on getting more homes within complete communities built faster. We streamlined decision making and provide increased accountability within the city of Toronto. We work collaboratively across divisions and with external partners like our school boards to review applications more efficiently. We are also focused on optimizing our limited resources while improving efficiency, consistency and transparency in the development review process. And our division is very focused on improving customer service for all participants. And that includes our counselors here at the city, staff across the city, our partners, external partners, and residents across our city at large. Our next slide is, it's, it's to really illustrate the city of Toronto's organizational chart. So this is a high level chart. It shows the service area under Deputy City Manager Jag Sharma that I mentioned before. And it shows the divisions under Development and Growth Services. And you'll see here the divisions under Development and Growth Services are really all, are really the key divisions that plan and, and implement housing and growth initiatives across the city. This is the organizational chart of Development Review Division, so my division. So it's a high level org chart and it's to give you a sense of how we are structured. So we have three key sections, which include Development Review Implementation, which is community planning, engineering review, and a Priority Development Review Stream. This is a stream, it's the former C2K Concept Keys section, if you're familiar with that group. And they were set up specifically to focus on affordable housing applications. We also have a Development Process and Performance Team, so this is new. And under that umbrella, we have a Process and Technology Stream and a very recent Strategy and Client Relations Team to help us meet our customer service objectives. And to the right are the staff that support my office. And I should mention our division includes about 400 staff, so it's a fairly big team. So in terms of working with the school board for this presentation, I focused specifically on the Catholic District School Board. But I would also like to highlight that we work very closely as well with the Toronto District School Board and in fact, have ongoing monthly meetings with Toronto Lands Corp., which is Ryan Glenn and his team, to look at, look at future sites and existing sites and make sure that our processes are, are supporting the goals of the school board. So we have, for the Catholic School Board, we have established ongoing monthly meetings. So since February, I'm happy to say that Milka, Amal and their teams and my team have been meeting frequently. And we've also had many email discussions in between meetings with the goal of unsticking these sites that were brought to our attention in February. We have established a proactive issues resolution approach to ensure that future sites do not make it to this, this committee. We're also working to align on timelines. So over the last couple of months, we have jointly, and when I say we, the Catholic District School Board and my team, we have jointly shared project plans with key milestones that need to be met in order to get to construction. And we are, I would say, very focused on improving our partnership approach. We're both public sector organizations with shared accountability to the communities that we serve. And collectively, our, our work helps strengthen communities and create complete communities. So the next slide is an update on the specific sites that were brought to, to this committee by trustee Rizzo in February. So we've, working with, with the Catholic District School Board staff, we've collectively come up with this chart to provide you with a sense of where those specific applications are. And I, but I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I'll give a high level update on each site. So St. John, Henry Newman, Notice of Approval with Conditions was issued on May 2nd and that project has been tendered by the school board. New Baycrest Catholic School, there is, there's one, one document that's, that's outstanding to the city. And I know that the school board team is working to provide that to us. Loretto Abbey, happy to say that there's an update, a very recent update, which is not shown on the chart. So two days ago, Notice of Approval with Conditions was issued by the city, which is great because it puts the school board in a very good position to meet their anticipated start of construction in September. For St. Monica Catholic School, the application was deemed incomplete and our, our teams are working together to, to ensure that the resubmitted documents are, are deemed complete and hopefully to get to start of construction in August 2026. St. Margaret's Catholic School, Notice of Approval with Conditions was issued in February. And the, the, the school board is working to clear those approval conditions with, with the intent to start construction by end of the year. Dante Elgeri, Notice of Approval was issued last year actually, so construction is underway. No further action needed on, on the city side. Bishop Allen Academy, comments from the city are due back to the school board and on June 13th, which is tomorrow. And I know we are, we are good to meet those timelines. St. Elizabeth Catholic School, comments were sent to the applicant in, in March and applicant, the school board is working to resubmit documents to us to achieve NOAC with the intent of getting to construction by end of the year. And Buttonwood Hill Catholic School, construction is underway, so no further action from the city. So that's a high level update on the sites that were brought to our attention. And just to reiterate my earlier point, while this is focused specifically on the Catholic District School Board, we're also working collaboratively with the TDSB to also advance their sites that are in the pipeline. Thank you.
Review of the city of Toronto's newly created Development Review Division and a status update on active school board development applications pertaining particularly to this TCDSB. At this time, we do have a public speaker who's registered on this item. And so we will go to delegations and if there's, we'll do questions after that. So we'll ask you, if possible, to just stick around because we're going to need you probably to answer a few questions. But at this time, I'd like to invite, is this online or in person, the delegation?
It's in person.
Oh, in person. Okay. So at this time, I would like to invite Chris Nunes, who's here. Welcome. So the way this works is you'll have five minutes to speak and I'll start the timer when you get started. And when you're getting close to the end of your time, I'll give you a, a little wave or something like that to let you know. Okay, but welcome and make yourself comfortable and please go ahead.
Madam Chair and the members of the city's school board advisory committee, my name is Chris Nunes and I am the Chair of the Loretto Abbey Catholic School Parent Council. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of our 700 plus students and the parents from the neighborhood and across many wards in the city. Loretto Abbey Catholic Secondary School was established in 1847 and the current structure was built in 1928. It's a historically significant building in Toronto with strong connections to the Sisters of Loretto and a long history of providing education for girls. The school was designated a heritage site in 2012, recognized the abbey's architectural significance as a rare example of neo Gothic architecture applied to an educational institution complex in Toronto. It is a very unique structure and as such, the Toronto District, the Toronto Catholic District School Board has engaged heritage planning experts so that the abbey's historical importance will be retained for future generations. This property was sold by the Loretto Sisters to the TCDSB in 2011 and the Province of Ontario agreed to provide funding to renovate the abbey in October of 2020. I am here out of frustration and represent the collective voices of our many families. We understand that this committee is not responsible for the delays that we have experienced, but we hope that with your support, you will be able to help with expediting the approvals that we need. In fact, we hope that you use your influence as representatives of the city and school boards to encourage working together cooperatively to resolve the remaining issues hindering the school renovation. Ultimately, we hope construction can begin without further delay. Our number one concern is over the city's recent request for a fifth submission of the site plan. The original site plan submission was, was submitted on July 2, July 2022. Subsequent resubmissions were made on June 29th, 2023, June 28th, 2024, September 16th, 2024, and March 25th of this year. The city has now identified new issues and is requesting more revisions despite the fact that none of these new issues were cited in the previous four submissions. This will now be the fifth submission requested by the city. The fact is, plans for a renovated Loretto Abbey are being undermined by an approvals process that has been mired in bureaucratic red tape and has taken far too long and pushed back the opening of the new addition. As you are aware, the renovation of the school cannot begin without site plan approval. Site plan approval is required for the notice of approval to proceed from the province. This applies to school construction and additionally, the installation of a sidewalk for the safety of our students. Many of the parents I represent made decisions to send their daughters to the school based on the approval of the expansion project. And many families are making similar decisions today on the premise that a new school with expanded and extracurricular programs will provide the best path forward for their daughter's success. Most of our students come from modest income families from the writings of Eglington Lawrence, York Center, Willowdale, Don Valley West and York Southwestern. They typically arrive by public transit to Wilson Avenue, take a sidewalk ticket to Mason Boulevard, where the sidewalk abruptly ends, causing them to walk on the road just to get to the school doors. During the winter months, this can be especially treacherous, walking through slippery ice and snow because without sidewalks, our daughters are ultimately forced to walk the streets with cars whizzing by with little regard for their safety. with cars whizzing by with little regard for their safety. Unfortunately, sidewalks are a contentious topic, and this neighborhood is no exception. Some of the neighbors may prefer no sidewalks, but it should be noted that the proposed sidewalk is located only on school property and does not impact any residential properties whatsoever. I contend this is demonstrably unfair for some neighbors to object to this sidewalk on school property because it puts the girls' safety at risk on their commute. The request for installation of the sidewalk is ultimately a matter of public safety. We understand that the City of Toronto's Vision Zero Initiative, which is supported by this very committee and includes school safety zones, was officially adopted in 2016, aimed at eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries. Yet, Loretto Abbey continues to have no sidewalk. Why? It is in everyone's best interest to have safer neighborhoods. The fact is, our daughters are facing increasing risks. We searched the Toronto Public Safety, Toronto Police Public Safety Data Portal for tickets issued in the last eight years in the Bedford Park-North Town neighborhood where the school is located. Would it surprise you to learn that the total tickets issued from 2016 to 2019 numbered 3,098? However, from 2020 to 2023, 10,908 tickets were issued, accounting for a whopping 252% increase. Of these charges, the majority were either assessed as distracted driving, aggressive driving, or speeding. This begs the question, is the city in the business of prioritizing the demands of the few overall else, including the safety of our children? I hope that you'll agree with me that even one preventable injury or fatality will be one too many, especially when the sidewalk solution already exists and has already been approved by the city planning staff. I repeat, the planned renovation of Loretto Abbey is being undermined by an approvals process that has taken far too long. It is believed that the ratepayers opposed to this project have appealed to city staff and their councillor, resulting in these delays and unreasonable requests for the site plan. Please, no more delays, no more politics. Get the construction approved, get the school built. The TCDSB and the city staff need to sit down, solve these remaining problems. Please commit to a delivery date without another round of lost months, hollow excuses, and no solutions. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to the voices of the families and students at Loretto Abbey. It is our hope that with this added context, you will consider our request for a clear path to a full permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. I would just ask, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
At this point, we have the opportunity to ask questions of the deputant. So I would just ask committee members if you have any questions for the deputant. Okay, I'm not seeing any from the trustees on the committee. I actually do have a question for you.
Sure.
So if you'll indulge me. Have you corresponded with the local councillor about sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
That was done last year.
That was done last year. And has there been a commitment to provide that? There is a project, like, the city is building sidewalks where there aren't any in different wards. I know I have a few being done this spring and summer and fall in my ward, but I'm just wondering, have you had a productive conversation with your councillor about that?
So we spoke to the city councillor, and they've referred us to the city planner. We've spoken to the city planner twice. They have committed to a sidewalk, they have not committed to when. Now, the concern here is that this is sort of, this has been a long process, like, going on decades to have a sidewalk installed here. So, you know, the commitment to build a sidewalk without a "when" is sort of meaningless, right? I mean, you know, if this has been 30 or 40 or 50 years in the making, you know, this is something that should get done, just out of safety, right?
Agreed. We do know that that is part of the Vision Zero piece, and I would just, I know one of the other pieces that the city is trying to do is to work in collaboration across departments so that we're not ripping up roads and sidewalks over and over again. So it seems like there is going to be construction here. It might be an opportunity to do it in coordination with the construction project being undertaken by the school board. So I guess I can certainly take this back, and, you know, perhaps... Trustee Rizzo, is this your ward?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I would suggest perhaps that you speak to your local councillor for this ward about this, and perhaps that can be, that timeline can be, if it's been approved by the city, then hopefully that can be coordinated.
The local councillor doesn't like to talk to me.
Okay. All right, so perhaps it might be best for the parent council chair...
Not the case with the others, but this one in particular.
Okay, then perhaps the parent council chair might wish to take this forward.
Yeah, our concern is just, you know, we're going on to a fifth submission. You know, they seem to be finding new taxes to stall and delay construction. You know, what we really want is just, let's get it built, right? Like, we're not, obviously, we're just concerned parents. We don't want any of our daughters getting injured or hurt just going to school.
Of course, and it does sound, it does sound, certainly from the presentation from staff, that NOAC has been granted this week, so there's some good news on that, and it sounds like things will be moving forward.
Yeah, we just want it over the finish line, right?
Yeah.
That's the ultimate goal here, is just safety.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't have any further questions.
Do you actually have another question?
So right now, it's an opportunity for a question to the delegate.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Nunes, I'm wondering if you could, and thank you for coming and presenting, giving us your submission. Will you be giving us a written copy of that submission?
Yes, I will submit it later.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I use the email that I used to sign up for the session? Okay, I will send it there later today.
Okay, thank you. So is it your understanding that the sidewalk will be built on school property?
100%. It will not impact any neighboring, like, any residential land. It is strictly on the school property on the, I guess, the east side of Mason.
Right. And did the city planner and the city councillor's office indicate that they would be supportive of a sidewalk?
They did. They said it will get built, and they were supportive of it. They just wouldn't commit to a timeline.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, that's enough. That's, I'll ask the presenters, the city staff, for further clarification. But thank you very much for that, and thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
I'm sure that the Loretto Abbey school community is very appreciative of you being here.
Nothing for the school.
Okay, thank you very much for your time today and for coming to speak to the committee, Mr. Nunes. We appreciate it. So at this point, we will turn to questions of staff on this item. So just looking to see who has questions on this for staff. There are no questions for staff?
I have.
Oh, okay, please go ahead, trustee Rizzo.
I don't see them, sorry. No, I was used to you being over there. I could see you over there a little bit better, but thank you. If you don't mind, some of, I can only speak to the ones in my community, and there's the new Baycrest Catholic School, the St. Margaret, the Loretto Abbey, Dante Alighieri. Unfortunately, I have, all of them happen, many of them happen to be in my community, and we're very lucky that we have that. Can you please give me, and thank you for the report. It's very helpful. I'm wondering if you could tell me what you think might help in moving the process forward so that we don't get to the point like we've gotten with Loretto Abbey with five submissions and requesting new information?
Thank you for the question, trustee Rizzo. To the Chair, I, so, in short, improved communication and collaboration. And I think that's what we have done collectively with the school board. Since February, we have been meeting monthly, but in between those meetings, we have had regular email and phone calls as well, and that has helped. But going back to my presentation, my division was set up to make sure that we, as a city, work with applicants more proactively to get projects moving. When I looked into the details of all of the sites, there were certainly things that could be improved on both sides, both sides of the fence. So we have been working collectively to identify some of those issues. Some of the issues are, I would say, systemic issues, others are, or could be alleviated by more regular communication. So we've, Milka and myself have worked to start putting that framework in place to make sure that we have those monthly meetings, that we don't wait for monthly meetings to also raise our hands if there's an issue. And I would say thus far, based on the update that I gave today, it seems that the school board isn't a good place to meet the construction timelines that are in that chart.
Okay, thank you. I've been on both sides, as a city councillor and as a school board trustee. And I know that, you know, like, we're spread thin sometimes. There's not enough staff to go around to do everything that we want to do. But it seems to me that perhaps there's too many silos. And I'm wondering if your department, like, you know, like, one minute, we have a site plan application, four submissions later, you're asking for a traffic management plan, or you're asking for an easement, you're asking for things that didn't exist in the first round, second round, third round, fourth round. How do we cut that? So that it's like, you know, like, here's our submission. If we miss something, we take responsibility, absolutely, as a school board. But to wait until, you know, three, what is it, three years later? After we submit a site plan, the first one? Like, it seems like we're, it puts our community and our kids in a situation where they can't even have, where they started school, four years later, they're graduating, and they don't see any of the renovations that they thought that they'd be the beneficiaries of. So what can we do to make that better?
So we have a plan for these sites, but I would say for any new sites, what I'd like to do is sit down with the school board, even before an application is submitted to us. Let's have a discussion to make sure that when a submission comes in, it really addresses all of the key points and it provides all of the key documents that we need. Not to say that, you know, in one submission, you'll be able to get the approvals, likely not, but my aim is to make sure that we never get to more than one submission and two resubmissions. So we, having that open communication, having that, I call it a workshop. I like to bring everyone into a room with the multidisciplinary team. I'm fortunate in my division because I don't only have the community planners, I have the engineers. I also have the transportation review staff now. That was, that structure was put in place late last year, so last, late September, early October. So it's really helped to break down some of those silos that I think that you're alluding to on the city side. And we're committed to working with the applicants as well. To your point, trustee Rizzo, we understand that the school board has limited resources, and so do we. So these processes that I'm putting in place is really focused on helping us to optimize our limited resources to get to the end goal quicker, which is construction of the school and improved quality of life for our students.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'm not even going to dwell on the details, but...
Trustee Rizzo, I'm just going to pause you for a moment before you get to other questions, just to check, because you've been over five minutes on your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just want to make sure that...
Oh, I thought I only had three questions.
That's okay.
Well, it's the answers, too.
It's the answers, too, yeah. So I'm just going to go to...
Okay, so yes or no from now on, okay.
So I'm just going to go to our other trustees to see if they have any questions, and then we can come back to you. You can do a second round of questions. But I just, I know trustee Shen has to leave at 11, so I want to make sure if he has any questions, he gets them. But we also have trustee DeShen, who we haven't heard from at all, and another trustee in the room as well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has questions? Nope, a quiet group today. So trustee Rizzo, you may continue, thank you.
It's a more general thing that I'm hoping. I understand and totally 1,000% support the fact that housing is the number-one priority in the City of Toronto. But if we build our housing in the City of Toronto and we don't have schools, they literally go hand in hand. Is there anything that we could do, for example, to prioritize school projects in significant areas of the city where there is large development, multi-residential housing, an influx of students, whether they, any of the boards that are represented here today? Is there anything that you could think of that we would be able to do to prioritize capital projects for schools in areas where we're building housing and we need and require school buildings built?
To the Chair, absolutely. As much as we are focused on addressing the housing crisis, we are very much focused on building complete communities. And schools, as you're alluding to, are a key aspect of successful communities. In the Development Review Division, we do have a priority development review stream that works closely with our district staff to advance projects in the future. We could look at that stream to put these projects in, but I would say, based on the model that we're developing with the school board staff right now, and having clear timelines upfront, understood, signed off by both sides, will, I think, help us to meet those timelines in a more efficient way in the future.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you very much for your report. I do want to introduce our Associate Director of, I never know his title, our Associate Director of Corporate Services and the Chief Commercial Officer, Mr. Derek Boyce, who is here, who's in charge of planning of facilities for our school board, and his staff are also here. He can do that. But I'm going to ask him the same question I asked city staff. What is it that school boards, in our case, the Toronto Catholic District School Board, can do to make the process more efficient so that we don't put school communities in the position that Loretto Abbey is in, St. Margaret is in, Dante Alighieri is in?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Rizzo and through the Chair. Just briefly introducing some of the staff here. Obviously Superintendent Sol Mislitch, who's in charge of our capital development. Got Superintendent Liberto sitting here as well, who's in charge of our planning. Ms. Richards, Kim Richards, who works in my office as a project specialist, and our head of capital, Amal...
Matadak.
Matadak, thank you, my apologies. That's, I do have to concur with the answer that was given. I think upfront, like yourself, trustee Rizzo, I'm also familiar with both sides, having been in municipal government for about 16 years, and so have led some of this work. I think the collaboration upfront is very key in terms of not only deadlines, but ensuring, as you stated, that all the requirements are upfront. What I think is the, and maybe I'll take a brief moment for this committee to just understand the impact of site plan. So unlike municipal government, we have to get all our approvals from the Ministry of Education. And so each, when we have multiple steps of approval, when we, we are held accountable to how quickly we can build schools because every year, delay is an increased cost, and so materials, labor, whatever it may be, they increase. Currently, we are building in a three-year site plan approval timeline with the City of Toronto, which isn't, which isn't great. It's not great at all. As trustee Rizzo has mentioned, what that means is that we have kids that are in holding schools in various parts of the city and traveling hours upon hours to get to their school and back each and every day. So this is a very real tangible problem at the local level. I will want, I do want to give kudos, though, to the city and to the members of the city's school advisory board because we have seen a difference in the last, since February. There has been a significance, I do want to acknowledge, that there has been a very significant difference in the collaboration and the work between the executive director and Superintendent Sol Mislitch, I think, has borne some fruitfulness in terms of how we move forward. We do need that momentum to continue. We do need that collaboration to continue. And really, having been on both sides as a commissioner in community services and had that portfolio a little bit, you know, a lot of it does come through internal collaboration from stakeholders, both on our side but also the city side. So what I mean by that is, in the fourth or fifth submission, as trustee Rizzo says, we can't be hearing something new from parks that should have been identified, or something new from waste and water that should have been identified earlier in the submission. That adds cost, adds time, and adds delays to our project, which we are held accountable for. for. So, one of the things we, I instituted in one of my former municipalities, as the executive director said, is that collaboration upfront, to have those workshops, so that we're sitting in a room, talking, working through that, and so that you're hopefully down to, I agree with her, you're not going to get it in one submission usually, but two submissions would be great, at the extreme, maybe three, but happening concurrently and happening quickly, and no new items coming up. So, what we're doing on our side is really working to, I mean, we build a lot of schools. We've been fortunate that we've had a lot of capital projects, so we, our consultants know what we have to do, we work with our partners, you know, and most of what we build in Toronto Catholic are replacement schools, so there's already a school existing. So, that's the other piece that's a little bit frustrating, is that we have a school existing, when we come with a design, when we come with requirements, sometimes we're expanding that school, fine, that means there are some things that are ancillary, that need to be thought of, but most of the times, it's a replacement school. So, I think the collaboration is key, both between the city and the Toronto Catholic District School Board, but I also think that if we, if we, we can get internal stakeholders to work better within the city, and then our team, definitely my team, to get our stakeholders to work more collaboratively, we can get this process shortened, because we do not want students out of schools for five, six years at a time. In a high school, that means a kid will be in a, a student would be in a relocated school for their entire career, and in elementary school, that means some elementary school students will start in kindergarten, all the way up to grade five or grade six in a relocated school, that's not...
So, just a reminder, it's wonderful to have you here, you're, you need to focus on just answering the question that trustee Rizzo asked you.
Yeah, that was my answer to the question.
Because you're not a committee member, so we don't want to get into, like, a back-and-forth and sort of extended comments, but just answering the questions.
Yeah, through the chair, appreciative of that, and there was just a long way of saying that I agree with the comments, and it was, I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of the implications and the entire process. So, apologies for that length of answer, but I don't get to this committee often, so when I do, I did want to take the time to ensure...
That's okay, and hopefully, hopefully, this is enabling everybody to build relationships that they can take to have discussions offline, not in the committee setting, that become really productive and move things forward. I also have a question for staff, unless, do you have further questions, trustee Rizzo?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I seem to recall, when I was a trustee with TDSB, that the TCDSB and the TDSB had hired a staff person to work in the city to do some of this liaison work. Is that...
Secunded.
Yeah, secunded. Is that still in place, and is that working productively?
To you, chair, no, it's not in place, the funding stopped about two years ago, so there is no liaison within the city that's funded by the school boards to support their projects.
Okay, do you think that's had an impact on slowing things down, just out of, like, are you able to comment on that?
I was not in the role at the time, chair, but I did hear from my team that, yes, there was a bit of disconnect, because the sites are across districts, or across geographies of the city, and that key staff was able to coordinate across all of our districts and collaborate with the school boards more regularly. So, it did, from what I heard, it did have an impact on the sites when that stopped.
Okay, are you having trouble hearing? Because it looks like we're having a challenge with some tech.
I can't hear you, sorry.
Okay.
Give me one second.
We're going to try to get all this rectified. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Would you like me to repeat the question and have the answer repeated?
I have a question, I need to hear the answer.
Okay. Vice Chair, can I ask you to just repeat the answer? Thank you.
Certainly, chair. There was a staff that was funded by the school boards, the funding stopped about two years ago, so that liaison position is no longer within the city dedicated to these sites.
And do you, do you feel that's had a, is that contributing to the lag time, perhaps, or the challenges that have been experienced?
I would say a bit. I'm hoping with the new structure and protocol that we've put in place for that monthly, for the monthly check-ins, for the collaboration in between meetings will help to alleviate some of the gap that we experienced when that position stopped, when the funding for that position stopped.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any further questions for staff on this item? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to any comments that trustees or anyone on the committee has about this item. Are there any comments, or further comments? Trustee, oh, trustee Shen, please go ahead, thank you trustee Rizzo for noticing that.
Thank you, ma'am chair, I just wanted to, we didn't have a long conversation on this topic, particularly because there is a lot of work that's being done between Toronto Land Corporation and city of Toronto, and a lot of things are moving forward well, so happy to see the progress right now, but I just wanted to make sure that I, I don't know if the associate director from Toronto District School Board, Stacy Zooker, who is the associate director for modernization and strategic resource alignment, is there in the room, I just wanted to recognize and introduce her, so she can wave if she's there, so that the relationship building that you talked about, chair, could kind of continue beyond the committee.
Thank you, vice chair Shen. Okay, trustee Rizzo, I think you're next in terms of comments.
Yeah, I was here for the entire time, that we had, in fact, secunded the planner, and the result was an average of taking 33 months before site plan approval happened. So, I think that what the executive director has said probably will be an improvement over what we had before. That's my personal opinion, I'm at least hoping that that will be the case. Secondly, I want to remember, I want to remind, and I think that the Toronto District School Board in particular, this chair, as the former chair of Toronto District and Toronto Catholic, what happens when we have delays? Things like we lose childcare programs, and that's what we did, we lost all our childcare programs, because the provincial government said, you've taken too long, there's too many delays, you don't have any money, and we can't build the childcare centers anymore. And that's exactly what happens in terms of the schools as well. If we build additions or we build new schools, I have a school, Dante Allegherry, that started 15 years ago. They are located at Lawrence and Dufferin, and they are going to Atobaco every day and have been for years. It's ridiculous, it is completely ridiculous. I feel terrible for the school communities that don't have a voice. It wasn't just about Loretto Abbey today, it was about all those schools and all those kids that have been displaced from their communities, not for the four years, but for more than 14 years. Generation after generation after generation of kids don't get to go to their local school community, it's really awful. I'm really hoping, and I'm praying, that this new system that has been described is going to work, and I, that's all I have to say. But we just can't keep going the way we're going, and we can't have political interference in what should be, like, you know, the Planning Act, this is site plan, these are the rules, comply with the rules, do what you have to do, get it done. So, I thank everybody for their attention, and I'm sorry I'm so passionate about it, but it just seems that sometimes bureaucracy and red tape get in the way of doing the right thing.
Thank you, trustee Rizzo, and I too just wish to make a few comments on this. I certainly do understand the challenges of delays in terms of the financial impact, the emotional impact on families. I have a school being built in my ward, Hodgson Middle School, where kids are being bused across the city, and I know it is hugely challenging. I would just say that I just want to comment on the child cares briefly, because you bring it up. I don't lay the fault of that at the city.
I didn't say that.
I just want to, I just want to be clear.
I thought it was delays.
It was delays, but I would say a big challenge with that was COVID, but also not complete funding from the ministry when those projects were initially done. I was deeply involved in the discussions around that at the time, and I think that some of the metrics and benchmarks don't necessarily match the scale of the projects, and boards aren't often funded completely for those, and then expected to make up in other ways for it, and childcare not being necessarily the primary funding of school boards, it makes it challenging, and being required to use proceeds of disposition and things like that to make up the shortfall. That's part of, there's, it's a complex problem, but I don't think, I just want to be clear for anybody listening, that I don't believe that was the city's...
Didn't help.
The delays certainly agree, they don't help, but I think the ministry bears some of the blame for that, quite frankly. So, anyways, with that...
The majority of the blame.
Yes, the majority of the blame, thank you. I know we're not supposed to be doing back and forth, but we certainly agree on that. Anyways, at this point, I'm not seeing any further speakers on this item, so is there a motion to receive this item for information, trustee Rizzo? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that has carried. So, at this time, I would just like to thank everybody, including our delegate today, and I thank everybody for their work on this committee today, but could I have someone please move the motion to excuse the absence of the members not in attendance today?
I'll move that, ma'am chair.
Okay, thank you, trustee Rizzo, I'm just going to read it aloud, that the city school boards advisory committee excuse the absence of councillor Parthy Candevel from the June 12, 2025 meeting of the committee. Did we have noticed that he would be absent? No, okay, I think that's the second time. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, that has carried. So, with that, this concludes our business for today. Thank you to everybody for participating, I just want to thank all the staff who presented on the two items, as well as the trustees, for their participation, and all the staff behind the scenes working to make this committee so successful. I really could not do that without you, we could not do that without you, and we hope that this is going to make a difference in terms of relationship building between the city and school boards. So, at this time, the business is done, and anybody who wishes to chat, staff to staff, can do so. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
And I wish everybody a wonderful end to the school year.